Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today. This is the ARPA grant work session. I'm specifically making it a work session because we're going to be collaborating and hopefully getting some plans in order for your own proposals for the ARPA grant. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act Grant. It is facilitated through the state library and they have just a little over $2 million to distribute to public libraries. I'm going to share my screen for a little bit. I'm going to talk about ARPA versus Emergency Connectivity Fund. I'm just going to go briefly over the Emergency Connectivity Fund because it's more complicated and it's actually one that we're going to have to direct you to the state library for help or your E-Rate Solutions company to help. Alright, so I guess I should introduce myself. I'm Mary Beth Schaefer. I am the Assistant Director and Continuing Education Consultant. We also have Patty Collins. She's the Youth Services Consultant, Andy Michener, the IT Manager, and Michael Adamick. He is the Digital Librarian. I think, what is it, Michael?
Library Technology Manager.
Thank you. I can never remember that. I'm sorry. Library Technology Manager. Thank you. Alright, so I'm going to share my screen and I'm going to go to the state website. Okay, so if you go to the state website, which is ksliv.info and you can do slash ARPA and it'll take you right to the ARPA grant, but if you just have a state library bookmark on your browser, go to the Librarians tab, find Grants and Discounts with just the middle column on this dropdown menu and click on ARPA Grant. You're going to have a full gamut of all their resources. There's going to be an overview of the grant guidelines and instructions and the archive video, the application form, the sample budget form. I want to minimize some things so I can see my screen better. Files and documents and FAQ. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act and it is through IMLS, which is the Institute of Museum and Library Services. And then the state library is facilitating facilitating this Kansas portion of that. It is different than the Emergency Connectivity Fund. So I'm going to go over the Emergency Connectivity Fund just really briefly because it's more in-depth, it's more complicated and you're going to need to work with your E-Rate person to really to really do the ECF. We at CKLS, we won't be able to help you very much with this one. Okay, so the Emergency Connectivity Fund is based basically off the E-Rate program. You have to file a project, but it's going to be either reimbursed of what you spent or you get a discount from your provider of 100%, so 100% discount. But it's not really a grant, so to speak. You have to apply within the window and you have 45 days to reply and it's specifically for connectivity. So equipment to connect or expanding your connection. But the kicker is what makes it so difficult is that it's limited to if you get tablets. Let's say, let's say you're getting tablets or hotspots for your patrons. Their patrons have to certify that they have insufficient internet connectivity or connective technology like a tablet at their home. So they have to prove need. Also, if you decided you wanted to put another Wi-Fi access point, it has to be off the library campus or grounds. So if you wanted to put a Wi-Fi hotspot in a community center, that may be applicable. But if you do that, you have to prove that there aren't other services available than the one that you are using. So it is a lot more of caveats and addendums and all sorts of jazz. To find out more about the Emergency Connectivity Fund, go to cks.libguides.com/grants and click on the Outside Opportunities button. I'm going to put that in chat if I can find my chat box real quick. That will take you to it. I'll have links to the video archive that the state library provided, plus an FAQ and the slides that went with that presentation. Also because of the limitations of that ECF opportunity, every time you check out a tablet, if that's what you're giving out, your patron has to sign documentation that says that they qualify for it, meaning they don't have sufficient internet connectivity at home or connective device at home. That's where the challenge is and that's where it's going to be. That's going to be a hurdle. That's what's going to be an obstacle for service. Okay, wrong thing. Let me go back. Okay, let's see. Any questions on ECF? I did talk with I did talk with Ben Mock, who is our E-Rate Solutions connection point, and he said, yes, they E-Rate Solutions is willing to help the libraries and they can do that. They're still trying to figure out everything just as we are. Not all the details for ECF are up yet or finalized yet. So that's also a challenge because we don't know what we don't know yet and we can't make plans until we figure out what that is. But if you want to go for ECF, work with your E-Rate person and/or Jeff Hickson at the state library. It will be a, there are several windows. The first window is going to be July 1st through June 30th of next year. That's their fiscal year. So the project has to be done within that timeframe. And the window for filing is 40 days after it opens up, which we're not quite sure when that is going to be. I believe they're hoping for June or July 1st, but they're still ironing out some details. Okay. Okay. Now, let's get down to ARPA real quick and then we're going to open this up to start talking about your ideas, what your goals are, what you're working toward, and then we can work together to create a project and get at least that first draft of a proposal. When you're ready to write it, Patty or I or even Andy, we can help proofread it. Andy's going to be your key point for helping you find the equipment you're looking for. And so we're here to help on that side for ARPA. I'm going to share my screen again. See if I can find.
Well, Mary Beth's doing that. Please understand that we're not discouraging you from the ECF grant. However, we, our job is to educate you on what's available to you. We do know however, that there are some things that we can do to help you with ARPA that are really out of our, out of our purview for the other grants. So it's not that we're discouraging that and it's not that there's not an opportunity that may be available to you, but we want you to look at what you can reasonably do to, and the person, as far as the process of writing, but also implementing the grant requirement. So keep in mind that if you've got two big things rolling out, what else are you going to have to give up in your library? And you might not be in a place to be able to give anything up right now besides just keeping your doors open. So, so just think about those things.
Okay. So again, this is ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, and it is through the State Library of Kansas. They're the ones that created this grant and set all the parameters. Alice Smith is one of the key people to talk to, but if you have any, does this qualify? Do you think this project will work? It may be beyond our determination and need to go to the state library for that. And so I'm looking for the email. Here it is. Email arpagrant@kansas.gov. Let me see if I can highlight that and put that in the chat for you. That's going to be the one where you have more specific questions that maybe we can't answer for you. And I would be happy to send that into you as a question as well. So.
I think you're sharing your wrong screen. What we're seeing is the ARPA grant webpage.
Okay, let me try again. Okay, are you seeing guidance on use of funds?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So this is the State Library of Kansas. This is their project guidelines. It is linked on the LibGuides link outside grants that I shared with you. It is also on the state library website on their second tab for their ARPA grant. Alright, so when you're making your grant, you have to remember that this grant is a project-related grant. Kansas libraries are encouraged to focus on projects that allow them to respond and recover from the turmoil of the past year. All, all public libraries in Kansas are eligible. Additionally, regional library systems may apply as well. These are the priorities as set by IMLS to enable libraries to reach residents with internet hotspots, accessible Wi-Fi and digital inclusion efforts, particularly in support of education, health and workforce development needs. Second, to provide rapid emergency relief to libraries across the country, allowing them to safely respond to the pandemic and implement public health protocols. I'm going to do a caveat here. This is not a retroactive grant, so this cannot be used to reimburse you for what you've already spent on PPE. I kind of feel like this second goal here for most of us maybe is already passed for what our need is, but if you have something that would still apply for this, awesome, go for it. But it cannot be a project you've already done. It must be a project that you're doing within the timeline, which I'll go over briefly in just a minute. The third priority, to support library services that meet the needs of communities throughout the US, including costs such as personnel, technology, training, materials, supplies, equipment and associated indirect costs. For this grant, it's a minimum of $1,000 for your project, up to $25,000. So that's a pretty big window and I think, don't just limit yourself to $1,000 because you think I'm a small library, I don't need a lot. Think about what your project needs and fund what your project needs. Alright, I'm going to do the scroll down here, look at the timeline first and then we'll go back up to Dunn's numbers and that. So let me find the timeline. Okay, so this is page six of that guide and it's, applications opened on Monday and they close on July 19th. If there's any other additional signed grant paperwork, you have until July 30th to get that into the state library. Do not turn it into me, turn it into the state. Your project must be implemented between August 1st and January 31st. And your last day to spend funding is January 31st and your final report due is March 30th. I also asked Alice for clarification on if you get a hotspot and you pay for the data service. You can pay for the data service with ARPA grants up to, and that's cutoff date, June 30th of 2022. Okay. I'm going to go over the Dunn's number and give you some instructions on how to do that because if you don't have a Dunn's number yet, you need to get one. You have to have a Dunn's number or be in the process of getting a Dunn's number to apply for this grant, to be eligible for this grant. So.
Library specifically.
I'm sorry?
Dunn's number for your library specifically, not a shared one with the city or something.
Right, yes. It can't, if you've been using your city's Dunn's number, you can't use it for this one. Let me find. If I can find it, I am looking for. Nope, that's not it. I had my Dunn's number figured out and now I can't find it. So let me stop, share and find it. And I contacted Dunn and Bradstreet. That's the company that makes the Dunn's number. And they gave me a little bit more specific instructions for how to get your Dunn's number than what the state library gave out. So let me see if I can find that. Getting a Dunn's number. There we go. Okay, and I'm going to share this in chat and then I'll share my screen. Maybe. Alright. Copy link. Make sure anybody can see it. Copy link. Okay.
Mary Beth, am I correct that basically the Dunn's number is a, is just an identification number associated with your business?
Yes, I believe that is true. I don't really know the history of a Dunn's number. If you want to know all that, go to Dunn's and Bradstreet and look it up. I just know you need to have one and it's a form of identification. There's some kind of certification that Dunn's and Bradstreet does on their end. So go to dnb.com/govdunns, G-O-V-T-D-U-N-S and follow these instructions here. It's going to ask you if you have an EIN number. If you don't have that, there's other ways to authenticate yourself. You can use, you will need two of this list here, examples of accepted documents, which would include a phone or internet bill, a utility bill, proof of insurance, an invoice from a third party. So I would think a book order that's invoiced to you or something along those lines with your library address where you are now. If you have that information, you should be able to get a Dunn's number. If you get stuck, which you might, Amy Otis had a little trouble with this. Go to this 800 number here and give them a call. I talked with Kevin. He was very friendly and helpful. So I think their customer service is going to be helpful to you there. If yeah, if you decide you're not going to do the ARPA grant for whatever reason and the Dunn's is the reason why, just know that if you're going to apply for almost any other federal grant, you're going to need a Dunn's number at least, maybe even a SAMs number, which is what the other, the ECF one was also asking for. So if you're going to apply for any other federal funds at any point in the future, which I encourage you to do when there's opportunities, you're going to need a Dunn's number. Okay, let me go back to, okay, can you see, I'm back at the grant manual? Can you see that?
Yes, we can see you scrolling.
Okay, excellent. Alright, so I'm going to go over the list of allowed items. Please note that this is not the extensive list. There may be things that are similar that's listed here that would still apply. We're also going to look at what's not allowed and. Hang on just a second.
We could, they would sell the other drugs to us.
Mute a couple people. Okay, there we go. So let's look at allowed items. Desktops, laptops, tablets, print and electronic collections, hotspots, printers, bringing fiber to a library, secure lockers, book bikes, Plexiglas shields, screens, other PPE technology to allow for hybrid meetings, e-readers, educational resources, touchless bottle fillers, remote access tools, online registration software, security systems. You can see there's a wide variety here. Now, pay attention to what's not allowed. You cannot use ARPA funds to, for marketing, advertising, public relations, salaries, food or alcohol, promotional items, performances, travel expenses, fundraising, advocacy. Here's the big one, construction or renovation. If you have to pay somebody to set it up for you excluding technology, that would fall under construction and so that would need to be either paid for through another source or volunteered. Architectural plans or consultants cannot be used for any services past the grant period. So if you do get a hotspot and you pay for the data plan, ARPA money can only pay for the data plan up to June 30th, 2022. It can also, ARPA cannot be used for debt repayment either. Okay. I'm going to stop my screen share. And now I'm going to bring it to you. What are some things you want to bring to your library that you think fit under this grant? And then we'll talk about, or a project. Because remember, this is a project grant. So you want to write this grant focusing on the project, not on the things that you're getting because of this project. If you are thinking, I want to get an A machine, you need to focus on early literacy and how the A machine helps you meet that goal rather than getting an A machine. I hope that makes sense. So what are some of your ideas for this grant? And we will start working on it and brainstorming.
And if you're hesitant to speak out, know that you are in a, in a safe space. Everybody here is working from the same page. And so don't hesitate to speak out. If you don't have the ability to use a microphone, then please message either in the chat or message one of us and then we will speak up for you.
And I do have a project that somebody sent in to me that they're not able to join us live, but they wanted us to look it over and I can use that as a starting part too. But I'll give you a few minutes to, a few seconds to put it in the chat or unmute and ask.
I like the lockers idea.
Yeah. How do you think you could use that in your community as a, as a project?
To make things available after hours. So if the people that can't make it during my normal business hours, they can, I can leave it in a locker for them and they can get it on their own time.
So extending services to after hours and by having holds pickup in a secure lockbox.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I can see how that'd be very beneficial, especially for, for libraries that have limited hours and towns where people have to drive elsewhere for work. So they're not getting home necessarily when the library is open. Patty had a comment.
So just taking their two statements and you see how we went from after hours to an actual reason. So I found that Mary Beth immediately went into grant speak. If you'll notice what she did, she went into grant speak. And extending library service to those who may have to commute out of your small town, extending library service beyond hours. So she, so she went right into grant speak and this may be the area where you feel the most uncomfortable trying to make your, make your story. And we've been talking about telling our story for a while and here, now we have to look at what the story is and go a little bit backwards. So don't hesitate to throw out those two and three word answers because then we can help you formulate, I mean, think in terms of, we need the topic sentence before we can write the paper.
And to find those keywords, it's easy to look at that guideline paper that I was showing you and how they describe the grant. You want to use those terms when you're describing your project. So let me just read one again. So one of the goals is to support library services that meet community needs and then they expand about it. Or to reach residents with connectivity, you know, for digital inclusion or education and health workforce development needs. So if you can use those terms that they already put in the guidelines, it's kind of like doing a keyword search. Those are going to like pop out to them and make your, make your proposal more competitive.
I have a question for you, Mary Beth. Is the ARPA, is it specifically for COVID relief as well, like the ECFs? Okay, so that.
It can be for COVID relief, but it can only be for your expenses or purchases between August 1st and January 31st. So the PPE, the disinfectant, all that stuff that was purchased last year cannot be covered for this. So that kind of makes it, I think, a little, yeah, that part of it was a little less useful because while there may be a new need in a new surge right now, I think our libraries have kind of already covered that. There is, somebody else had a comment. Hoyzington says, I'd like to focus on early literacy with, with A computers. So right there, she has the project, early literacy. That's her goal. That's her thesis statement. How does she meet the early literacy need that she is trying to, trying to meet there? She's going to do that with an A computer. So when you write out your grant, you're going to want to talk about early literacy, how that affects your community, maybe what's already there, but where the gaps are and how having A computers in your library would, would meet that need. Okay. Barb asks a good question. Where would you put those lockers in your community? Make sure that when you have your project and then yours, your equipment that's going to meet that goal, that you've thought about how is it going to fit into your library? Where is it going to go? How is it going to be secured? All those, all those elements. Okay. Did I understand that if you use funds for hotspots or mobile, yeah, mobile hotspots, the funds can be used for them, for sustaining them during the grant period. Monthly bills can add up. Yes, you can pay for your data service plan for your mobile hotspot, but you can't pay for that service plan after June 30th, 2022. So if you get a hotspot and you can't buy it until August 1st, you have 10 months, 11 months of service before you'd either need to find another source of funding or your service would end for your hotspots. Okay. Alright, Danielle has a covered outdoor area for her lockers. So it's at the youth center, but maybe that would be a good partnership opportunity. That's another way to make your grant strong is talk about partnerships with your community. You're going to, you're going to do a story walk and you've already partnered with Parks and Rec or whoever runs the parks in your city and they're going to put the stands up. So they're going to do the labor, which can't be paid for with this grant and you're going to provide the story walk itself. Okay.
I can answer, Barb had a question. How much would a hotspot cost for a year's use? Some of the libraries that have hotspots, I believe, all use Nextech and I believe the hotspots are around $30 a month per device. And the devices are about $120, $150 per device. So monthly cost on that could add up quickly if you're not not planning for that.
Yes, and that's why it's probably also good to either plan to just stop that service July 1st, 2022 or start looking for an additional source of funding if you want to continue that hotspot service. Also, we need to make sure that this project, when you write it, it needs to show your need from how your services have changed since COVID. So, such as with the lockers, since Danielle brought that one up. In, in order to continue low contact and also to extend our services beyond our hours, we're, we would like to add secure lockers for after hours pickup. And you can go from there. Do the plans go month to month or year to year? That would be probably depending on your plan. They usually contact for a year. It's a year contract, but you probably pay monthly.
Right.
And you probably, and that's another thing with this timeline, your funds must be spent by January 31st. So you're going to want to prepay till June 30th of 2022. What are you going to say, Andy?
Of the hotspot, if you're looking for a way to, to, to make that fit, your, your wording may be to, to continue that homework service because you're looking at the nine-month period of time that matches a school year. So that may be the way that you are able to sell this in your grant, that you're making the hotspots available as this is still a time of hybrid learning in your compute, in your community, or it may be something like that. So think of where, think of the things that you know about your community and the things that, as Mary Beth mentioned, the partners. So I believe it was Diane from Bison that asked the question about the hotspots. And in their community, they were still dealing with the hybrid world, but they have low connectivity for their community. So, so this was, this would give her a reason to make it fit and it also fits that, that time period because nine months seems like, well, to a patron, well, why would I only get it for nine months if you're not going to extend it beyond? You can use that to explain to your community. You can use that to explain to your community as well.
Yes. Another thing to make sure that you do when you get bids and before you sign anything, that it's dependent upon receiving ARPA, the ARPA grant that you're applying for. You don't want to have anything come through, and then for whatever reason, ARPA doesn't come through. This is actually a fairly easy grant application, and if you can meet those criteria that we talked about, you should get it. But again, nothing is ever a guarantee on this grant. So make sure that whatever quotes you have or things you have lined up for your grant, that it's contingent upon you receiving ARPA grants. Also, I have some questions here from from Otis. They want to do kind of an early literacy program with buying some playaways and aw stations. But they also talked about a story walk. And they asked if story stroll is what they're calling it, displays were purchased, excluding the installation, does it have to be installed on library property? This does not need to be installed on library property, but it does need to be library related. It's it's kind of like if you part, so you need to partner with, let's say they're putting the story stroll in the park, you need to partner with the city, but then it needs to be, you know, provided through ARPA and, you know, the Otis Community Library, what have you there. She wants to know about outdoor musical play equipment. Um, if that would be part of the grant, that would be one I would go to that email that I put in the chat and ask them. Of course, the installation would not be paid for, the construction part. It probably would not need to be on library property, but you would want to partner with somebody else in the community for that. And we need to have some written agreements with that, because and you'd want to look into insurance liability, because I think, I don't know what musical play equipment, how much is physical on there, but if somebody gets hurt, what would that entail? Library board is anxious about having tablets or laptops for patrons to check out due to higher likelihood of damage or theft. This is, this is not a new thing. Anytime a library had a tablet to check out, they're worried about theft. You put your replacement cost in there for what it would cost to pay for it, and if it comes back damaged or returned, they would need to pay for that. Andy, do you remember if ARPA equipment needs to be all filtered, or is that just ECF equipment?
Yes, any online, anything federally funded that has internet connection, it has the SIP rules required.
Because what they said in ECF is if it's a tablet, but it's not connecting through federally funded connection, it doesn't need to have a filter on it. It's only if you're connecting to a federally funded connection that it needs to have.
And the state library said it's kind of a gray area on that one, but it's a good idea to err on the side of caution and filter any device the library has.
Right, because Kansas version of SIPa, the Child Internet Protection Act, is more stringent than the federal Child Internet Protection Act. So remember, anything that's connected to the internet needs to be filtered. So um, let me see. This grant is limited to one grant will be funded for a library. You only get one grant, and it needs to be one project. If you have a whole bunch of ideas, you need to find a unifying project for that idea. If you just come with a list of, well, we need this, 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 and this, but there's no connecting theme, if you will, it's probably not going to be funded. Right from the project point of view, what is your ultimate project, your umbrella? And then what is fitting underneath that umbrella? Okay. For the book walk, would a sign in the first stand stating the partnership of grant funding surprise? I would think so, but for clarification, that would probably be a good one to ask the the state library. If people can't return a book, I'm thinking they probably won't return a tablet. Things are not going to be returned. That would happen with hotspots, that happened with tablets. With hotspots, you can discontinue the data service to it. So then all they have is a device that doesn't connect to anything. Some tablets, you can put a Find My Device app on there, and then you're able to find it and lock it down. So then they just have a glass brick, exactly. So there are ways to control your devices, and I don't think this idea should be what stops you from getting tablets or hotspots for your library. We are wanting to provide a mobile hotspot and laptop for those patrons who need access after library business hours and wireless printing. We have so many people who have phones and want to print from our library printer. I'm not sure how to link that into one project. Any ideas? That's a great question. Think about the needs for the printing and think about the guidelines that were listed. Let me find the right one. And I'm going to share my screen again here.
I'm thinking along the lines of expanding technology services that the library provides. That's pretty encompassing.
It is. So one of the priorities to enable libraries to reach residents with connectivity. And and it's a support of education, kids wirelessly, wirelessly printing for homework, health and workforce. So that's going to really encompass your needs for that wireless printing. They need to print something for the work. They need to print something for health. They need to print something for education. Yes, there's going to be things where they print for for entertainment value, but the reason for you need this wireless printing is because you have a community need access to printing from their mobile devices after library hours. I don't, are you going to put the printer like in the vestibule? Or how are they going to pick up? But that's another question. Anyway, um, so that's why you look at these priorities and use their wording to help you with your grant writing. Okay.
And try to be broad. Don't try to be specific.
Yes, that's a good point. Thank you. I want to stop share. Okay. Okay, Andy was answering the question about the MiFi. Okay, I think we would a flag that would be hung outside the library that says open be covered. It would show the library is open to patrons and opposed to curb service. Think about what the project is. What is the goal? Is it, you know, how do you make that work as a project? And I'm not thinking of one, but let's see, let's.
And remember, it's got to be minimum of $1,000. So it's got to be, your project has to be big enough to spend at least $1,000.
Right.
Marketing is one of the things that's not covered. So we have to think of how this flag works into a bigger picture, because that's just one thing that you want. But how does this work into a bigger picture? Because marketing is not one of the.
Right, and we want to make sure that that sign is not construed as marketing. What is, what is the goal for your library? To help your patrons stay connected after COVID and to promote library services after COVID? Is there a way to make those goals, which are the goals from the grant, fit the project for a sign for your library, an open sign for your library? You can bring that question to thearpakansas@ks.gov, that email that I put in there. And they can direct you as well, but I think they're going to want to know what is the project that you're going to do. And I think that's, I'm going to keep saying that, because that's what you're going to have to come at this grant with. What is the goal and what are, what is the goal? And then how does the stuff help me reach that goal? ARPA grant, thank you, at Kansas.
One other thing, the the webinar said is IMLS wants good narratives to bring to Congress to to show them what what this funding accomplished.
Yes, so.
You write good grants.
Yeah. So I was thinking, go ahead.
Oh, you go, go ahead.
I was gonna, I was gonna take Brenda's example of the wireless printing. During COVID, I'm sure that Plainville Library saw this need for people that needed to print from their mobile devices, because that might be the only device they have for job applications, to send in medical information, what have you, fill out forms, and they didn't have a way for their patrons to get the printing that they needed. So they can tell this story. You want to keep it, you want to keep it brief and concise, but you want it to demonstrate your need effectively. So they saw this need, people, students couldn't print their homework. Health information they couldn't have access to except on their phone. So if they got a diagnosis and they needed to read, you know, the doctor sent them information, they needed to read it, and they needed to print it so they could read it better. Or if they had job-related needs where they needed printing, they saw this need at their library. Does the title, yeah, go ahead.
Brenda asked from Plainville, does the grant project title on the grant application, does it need to be catchy or just straightforward? Um, I would think as clear as your project is, is what they want. If it is too catchy, it's likely to be taken as not serious. And so be thinking in terms of how you can explain in a couple of words that title is going to get across that project. And unbeknownst to you, we have been adding things to your web repertoire by asking things like having your your patrons do their stories for the summer library program testimonials. We've been asking those questions for a while, because now you're in the driver's seat of writing that same kind of narrative to tell your community story to make this turn into some dollars. Am I right, Mary Beth, that there is a max of $200,000 for the state of Kansas? And so.
$2 million.
Or $2 million. And so those, you know, there, you can figure that some large libraries are going to go for that $25,000. Um, but when we started to talk about the hotspot, you can see that this $1,000 isn't going to go very far for that particular project if you're looking for more than three hotspots, because you've got those monthly fees. So think bigger, but don't think of, but don't think so far out that, you know, that you cannot spend the money. But but plan for what the reality is. And that's the other thing where you might be looking at some technology pieces, and you might have to to tap our brains there as well. Because Andy, you saw how quickly he was able to come up with those numbers for you. But he would do another quick check to make sure that that's pretty close to the correct information today. We also know the projects we might have looked at two years ago, the cost of those projects is astronomical compared to because of COVID. So that's part of the, that's part of the picture. Because of the rising costs, you know, the the story stroll, for example, you know, each one of those stands was was running about $300. Now we're looking at closer to $450 because the price bumped.
Yes, I'm gonna read the, so somebody had a question. Okay. Feel free to interrupt me if you do. I'm going to read the brief description of the grant project, and I'll show my screen so you can read along with me. This is page seven of the guidelines. Explain how the grant funds will be used to help your community respond directly and immediately to the pandemic or support digital inclusion efforts that enable your library to reach residents in support of education, health, and workforce developments, or provide rapid emergency relief to your library to safely respond to the pandemic and implement health protocols, or support library services to meet the needs of your community by using the funds for technology, training, materials, supplies, and equipment. You will note over here, you have a 600-word limit. So write it out. It's an online form. So write it out either by hand or in a Word document beforehand. Send it to us. Let us help you edit and proofread it and before you submit. You also need a project evaluation. Briefly explain how the library will measure the success and impact of the grant. So we had this discussion, how do you know who's using your story walk? And some libraries had like a a piece of paper or something that you turned into the library after you went through the walk, or you stuck some sticker at the last one or something. Think of a way how you can give a tally of how many people enjoyed your story walk or how you're going to track usage for the hotspots. For your budget, you must use the budget spreadsheet, which is found on the state libraries ARPA documents tab. And that goes through what you need, get quotes or look for prices, round all amounts to the nearest dollar, list or describe items into each category. Make sure if you're getting equipment that needs to be plugged in, that you include the cost of the charger, if it comes separately, or if you need us, you know, that kind of stuff. What is all the equipment you need to make it work? If you're, if you're getting a printer, make sure that you have the the networking cables that you need, the connection cables that you need as well. You also need the total amount requested. Do not underbudget yourself. Try to budget as generously as you can without overbudgeting yourself. There's, that's a fine line, but don't say, oh, well, we could probably make do with this much. So you get down to the thousand. Don't do that to yourself. You're going to put yourself on a bind. Honestly, think about what the cost is and 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 don't sell yourself short. Um, there's electronics email, and you need a person that's going to be in charge of the application, even if it's listed above. So make sure that you have the name on there. And this is what the form looks like. There's here is to choose your file. That's where your budget is from that spreadsheet. You attach it just like you would an email attachment. If you are struggling with this, call CKLS. And if you're using a work computer, which I recommend, we can remote in and see your screen and help you through this. Yes, Patty also says work with a board member or community member as you apply for grants. They're going to help. They're going to read your grant with new eyes and might see, oh, well, you kind of skipped a part here, and you're not telling the real reason why we need this printer. And it's because, you know, nobody was able to print their tax forms this year, or something along those lines. Okay, I must stop share there. Yeah, tax forms always printing need, so and I think that goes under workforce and workforce needs and service for your community. All right, we have about 12 minutes left. I'm interested to hear any other ideas, or if you're just thinking, I know that my community needs this, how do I make it work for this grant? How do I fit it into the framework? I'd be interested to hear those as well. One suggestion that a library had was they wanted an outdoor space to have programming. So you can make that during COVID, we got a good response to have outdoor story time. We would like to continue that to serve our patrons in the future, but we need the space to do it. The grant would pay for the materials. But then you need to partner with somebody that would help build the gazebo or the picnic area or whatever it is that you're set up. So make sure that you have the the goal, which is a project, not the thing.
And and for example, on the gazebo project, you or the outdoor space project, you want to tell us in the grant that the relationship with our city, we've already discussed with our with our city, and they have assured us that the city maintenance. we've already discussed with our, with our city and they have assured us that the city maintenance crew will build, will construct the cement pad and construct the gazebo once we provide the materials. Brittany, I'm going to use you for a second because we've kind of already talked to you a little bit. One of the things we mentioned, Gail and I went to Long Island not long ago and we mentioned handicapped accessible doors. And when we say handicap accessible doors, it sounds like we're starting with, we want some doors. Okay. So now we need to flip the script to figure out, why do we need those doors? Okay, in, in the Long Island case, the doors lead into the library, but it's also the community space. So this, this, these doors are, are not handicap accessible. When Gail mentioned it, then she, she told the story of, of why the doors fit into the project. And so from one of you, we would like to hear how you see that working. So you can start to think on the outside. So we know what we want. Now how are we going to get there?
Would it be something along the lines of expanding access to the library or expanding accessibility to the library? Something like that.
Something like that. You could also do less contact. So you're getting not quite a contactless entry, but you know, it's working toward a contactless entry, which would help with COVID. And yeah, so I think you could do both of those. And I think that would be good to do both of those.
And then in the, in that relationship, when we, we tell that story, those are both good examples. Then we would say that the city maintenance crew, as they own the building, has agreed to install the doors and install the electricity that would be needed. So there, there are two parts of that, but, but that's the, that was the responsibility that the city committed to this because the library is getting the doors and how does this fit the library? Because those main outside doors lead into the library as well as the community space. So earlier Mary Beth says it has to be a library related project. So the story walk works if it's, if it's in the, the city park, if it's sponsored by and maintained by the library. Well, in this case, those doors are leading into a city building, but that city building has two parts.
Now there's a question, you talk about permanent structures, but what a tent type, tent type structure or shelter work? I'm thinking like one of those awnings you put up over a picnic or whatever. I would think it would, but I would ask the state library for confirmation. You wouldn't have any construction fees. So I think it would work. But again, it may also depend on how you phrase it in your project. If you're wanting to put some hard numbers to a connectivity problem in your area, Andy, put a good link in your chat and this will show need. And you can say according to, and then broadband USA, you know, our connectivity in our county is, you know, 25% of residents in our county or in our town do not have internet connection, something along those lines. It's a hard number and it's going to make your grant even stronger. All right. I'm hoping this has gotten your mind kind of worrying and thinking about possibilities. If you're still like, I know this is what we need and you're still thinking about the thing and you're having trouble getting the project idea, how to make this project so it fits within the framework of the grant. Contact me or Patty and even Andy. Because all of us can help you think about, we've all went to the webinar and sat and, and looked through the guidelines and feel like we have a good grasp of it. So we can help you with it. This is what we're here for. We want to help you get this grant. We want to make sure you get this money. So please, please take advantage. I'm going to remind you of the timeline again. So let me pull that up.
We do understand that something of this nature can be really imposing and quite scary. But we assure you that you, you have us to help you. And, and as we said, we want, we want to make sure that you get the grant, but the, but the deal is you have to ask yourself, it's what I'm asking for, something that I can truly accomplish, because that's part of the responsibility. And you have to determine who that grant administrator is. And that a lot of times is the library director in, in, in the CKLS world. And so you have to be, you have to know what your responsibility is there and, and be prepared for those responsibilities. We're certain that you can do these things. We don't have a question at all.
All right. Do you see my screen with the grant timeline?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I think somebody had a question.
I think we lost someone.
Okay, okay. So this is a very tight window and that's why we rushed it. The Friday was the soonest we could get, today was as soon as we could get this, we're session going. So the application is open now and it closes on July 19th. Any other signed grant paperwork is, that would go along with your grant has until the 30th to get in. But it is a very short window. So hit us, hit us up, send us an email, give us a call and we will help you get this figured out and write the best grant that you can. The thing to focus on here is not so much, you know, worrying about grammar and that, but making sure that your proposal fits within the, the guidelines of the grant and that it's a project that you're funding that fits those goals that they've listed out there. If you can do that, I, I think you have a really, really good chance of being funded. And this one is a lot more flexible. ARPA is a lot more flexible than, than the ECF. But if you're interested in that one, please contact Jeff Hickson at the state library or your E-rate person, whoever your E-rate person is.
And, and finally, because library boards are required as one of their responsibilities to help ensure funding for the library. They need to, they need to know the direction that you're headed and they need to be a part of this process in some way. So why, why we encourage this is if for some unfortunate situation were to happen and you were not the person at the library due to a health situation or whatever, and those, those deadlines came due, that it has to fall to somebody else. So this is not something that you would do without speaking to a board member or speaking with your board. So they need to know what's going on as well. And they're also your best advocate. So if you need help with the city, then they're another person that, hey, they might know the, the, the city manager and they might say, hey, I think I might have some pull in order to get this project going. So don't think within, just, just within your own, own space. Look who your helpers and your partners are, but your library board must know that you're applying for something of this magnitude.
And, and this grant could be, you know, automatic door openers, automatic faucets, you know, touchless things which would follow into the COVID response. It could be computer equipment and connections, internet equipment. It could be materials to expand your collection where you found a need, you know, along those lines. So really the limitation is how you make it fit into your project, which I've said a million times. I'm sure you're sick of it. But I, I do think that, I do think any library can, can get the money that they need for this project. All right, final questions, concerns? Because it's so short, we probably would not be able to come out and help you in person. But if it works out that we can, we are willing to do that. Cause sometimes you need to like, you know, pow wow together and work together. But I can't guarantee that that's a possibility, but we are a phone call away and if we need to, we'll be on the phone with you all afternoon.
And, and we also, we also can talk to you via Zoom because sometimes you just need to be able to talk and see a face. And so we have a whole lot of options. We didn't have a couple of years ago. So you're, you're not stuck out there all by yourself. We're here to help you.
And if you're, just know that you want to try for something, you know that your library can use it, but that's as far as you can get. That's enough to request a meeting with us. Okay.
Don't forget how awesome you are and that you do great things for your community. Now we're asking you to think, to think bigger than you've probably thought ever before. And, and here's that place where we've talked about that wish list. How do we make it fit the project?
Yes. All right. And I will send out this archive. Probably will be up on Monday. I'll try to get it out sooner, but I can't guarantee. And if you're, if you're just in the brainstorming thing and you're just like, I have some ideas and you just sent me an email with ideas, that's fine too. I want to help you as much as you can, much as I can. I want you guys to get this money. So I'm going to do whatever I can to help you out. All you have to do is ask and we'll, and we'll help you there. All right. I am going to stop recording.